Good afternoon and welcome to this evening's, I mean this afternoon's meeting of the Glenorkie Planning Authority for September two thousand and twenty four. I would like to start by acknowledging the Mua Nina people as the traditional owners of this land. We recognise all Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land and waters of this island, Lutritu. We pay our respects to Aboriginal elders past and present. We commit to working for a city that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. My name is Su Hickey and I'm the Mayor of Glenorkie City and Chair of this afternoon's Planning Authority. Joining me here in chambers are my fellow Alderman, Alderman Cockshutt, Alderman King and Alderman Yaxton, who's also the Deputy Mayor. We also have a number of council staff in attendance and we're going to move on to item one, which is the Planning Authority Declaration. The Glenorkie Planning Authority intends to act as Planning Authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety three. The Planning Authority has full power to make planning decisions on behalf of the council. Our meeting procedures, Planning Officer presents assessment and recommendation and then answers any questions of the elected members. The Chairperson invites the applicant and any interested parties to have their say by addressing the meeting. The speakers will be limited to five minutes each. We have three guests this afternoon, being John McCann, Janice Bryan and Eddie Steenbitt. Please note at this stage a decision has not been made on the application. The Chairperson may ask the Planning Authority to comment on any matters raised. The Planning Authority discusses applications, the statutory planning, four statutory planning applications, the Planning Authority decides the application and the senior statutory planner explains appeal and what he does. For planning scheme amendments, the strategic planner explains the decisions being made by the Planning Authority and the Tasmanian Planning Commission. For the legal requirements, when deciding an application, the Authority is required by law to seek to further sustainable development objectives of the Act, to consider representations received during the public notification period and make the decisions by reference to the current planning scheme provisions. The meeting rules are, please comply with any directions given by the Chairperson and please respect other people's views and their right to have a say. So item two is apologies or leave of absence and we have one apology today, which is Alderman Jan Dunstiff. And we have four Authority members in attendance. Now, item three is pecuniary interest. Does anyone have a pecuniary interest? No? Item four, confirmations of minutes. Would someone like to move the minutes? Thank you very much, Alderman King. Thank you very much, Deputy. Any discussion?
It's a long time ago. So, no.
Okay. Is there any discussion? You don't want to comment? No. Okay, put that motion, all those in favour, vote. Raise your hand. Thank you. Carried unanimously. Now, item four is the proposed use and development of, let's go to that one, of demolition works and works for commercial premises, business and professional services at two Regina Street and Mill Lane, Glenorkie. I can tell the officers that we, Alderman, have read it thoroughly. They've taken us read. The Chair invites the relevant Planning Authority to present the proposal. He finishes with a recommendation. So can I call on the officer?
Yes, the application is for a commercial building at two Regina Street. The slide on the left shows the general location, so the building will be behind the road shops along Main Road, which are opposite North Gate, which is the large building, it's a large roof structure in the slide. The slide on the right shows the actual lot and where the building is being proposed, so it's currently occupied by single dwelling. This shows Regina Street, so where the arrow is pointing, there's that single house that will be demolished as part of it. This building, this slide that shows Regina Street also shows the building that's adjacent, which is known as Snow's Dry Cleaning. It's a heritage listed building and the reason I'm mentioning that now is because this slide shows a particularly good view of it. And next slide, please. This shows the Berry Street car park, which is the side boundary of that lot. You notice there is a series of car parking spaces that are alongside the fence as part of the application. It's also proposed to do works in that car park and to create car parking spaces that are at the ninety degree angle to that fence. But we get to that when we get to the car parking layout. Next slide, please. This is the backyard of that house that's going to be demolished, that's on that lot. Next slide, please. As part of the property, you notice the concrete pad where the shipping container is on, that's also part of that lot. But that contains right away, that gives access to the back of the two shops that are in front and that's going to be remaining the same. There'll be no change with the proposal. Next slide, please. So this shows Main Road, just in the way of context, here again you see Snow's Dry Cleaning, you can just make out the tops of the trees and those trees along the Berry Street car park. Next slide, please. This is the proposed building, so it's three stories, it's just over twelve metres high. It's intended to be used as a mix for consulting rooms and offices. It's intended that there be five medical practitioners and that the remainings on the two lower floors and on the top floor there to be office space. As I mentioned before, as part of the proposal, the existing house will be demolished. There'll be a relocation of a sewer main and a car park reconfiguration. Next slide, please. So this gives you a general layer of the ground floor. So on this slide, you might just notice the blue line, that's sort of towards the bottom of the floor plan of the building. That's actually the property boundary. So it's proposed to have the car parking spaces that will go partially over the applicant's lot and partially over the council car park. And as part of doing that reconfiguration, there will be an extra nine car parking spaces being gained as to what there is now. But the upper floors of the building, they will be extending to the boundary, so that essentially will be our hanging, the car parking. Next slide, please. This would show, the top slide is showing what it would look like in Regina Street and the bottom slide is what it would look like facing Berry Street car park. Next slide, please. This shows what the building would look like from Main Road, although I don't believe it will be quite as imposing as it looks like on the plan because if you have it from a human perspective, where we are not even half the height of the buildings in Main Road and sort of looking up, we wouldn't actually get to see the full extent of that building from Main Road. And the bottom slide is then what it would look towards Mill Lane. The next slide, please. So in terms of designing, it's within the central business zoning. The use classification is business and professional services, that's no permit required within the central business zone. However, the application is discretionary because there's several design discretions within the special area plan that also applies, the Glenorkie Activities Centre Urban Design Plan and there's a significant car parking variation. Next slide, please. So these are all the discretions. I won't discuss them all because a lot of them are quite minor. I'll talk about the height mainly and how that relates to the heritage aspect and about the car parking. Next slide, please. And also the representation, I mentioned it now because it relates to the heritage concerns about the building next door and that relates back to the height. So in terms of acceptable solution, normally in terms of height, a building to meet the acceptable solution could be ten metres high within the first six metres of the road and then go up to twenty metres or be as high as any nearby heritage building. However, this building is much higher than adjacent Snow's Dry Cleaning. When you have a look on the bottom elevation, that shows what it would look like in Regina Street. There is a section of the Snow's Dry Cleaning building that's more of a utilitarian nature, that was added at the later stage. And that sort of provides a bit of a break between the proposed building and the heritage listed building. The representation did raise concerns that the building was too bulky and too high and too overwhelming in its nature in relation to the Snow's Dry Cleaning building and also that it would stop light filtering through, which is one of the objectives that the architect originally intended for the Snow's Dry Cleaning building. I referred it to Council's Heritage Officer, who had a look at the issue and he is of the opinion that the height and the way the building is designed will be respectful of the heritage listed building, especially because there was that separation because of that new, more utilitarian building that's in between that and the glass section of Snow's Dry Cleaning. I think we've got some more slides as well that demonstrate this a bit more. Again, here you can see what it would look like from the Berry Street car park in relation to Snow's Dry Cleaning. I'm not sure whether that's another one. And that's, again, that's probably the most important view, would be this one here. So you can see Snow's Dry Cleaning will be still very prominent in the location where it is and it will be quite muted, the elevation that's visible at the same time as Snow's Dry Cleaning. So it was found that the height was acceptable and respectful of the heritage listed building. So it was considered that that would meet the performance criteria in this respect and it would in that way also answer the representation, the concerns that came with the representation. Please have the next slide. So this is a layout of the car park. The application, the way it was proposed, it was originally proposed with providing no car parking spaces. However, because the arrangement is actually creating an extra nine car parking spaces and also because the way additional spaces are being created, there's also strip of the applicant's land that will be part of the council car park. So it was recommended that nine spaces will be allocated to that use of, that are being created as part of the new layout and that a strip of the applicant's land then becomes part of the car park. To achieve that, we're recommending that the Part Five Agreement be entered into to regulate that arrangement, which is one of the conditions, and also that there be a car park licensing plan as well for it. The other thing with the car parking news as well, I'm not sure whether you've been provided. The engineers wanted to change one of the conditions, so as not to refer to the number of car parking spaces. In particular, at the moment we're saying thirty four car parking spaces are part of the layout. We're not quite sure whether we can fit thirty three or thirty four spaces because one is a bit short and we're not quite sure whether that will meet the requirements or not. But one of the conditions is actually that a car parking plan will be provided and be approved through engineering as part of the whole arrangement. At that stage, they will then know for sure whether we can create thirty three or thirty four car parking spaces. It's just to do also with what they're called, it's my understanding, but I think you can ask some questions of the engineer afterwards if you have them. That has to do with this with us as well as to how you can actually get in and out of the car parking spaces. But in terms of the overall discretion, there's a, the planning scheme requirement will be for forty four car parking spaces and if we count the nine spaces going towards the use, there will be a shortfall of thirty five. But it was assessed because of where it is in the middle of the city, that there's lots of car parking available and also that people often undertake one trip to do for multiple purposes. They may go to doctors as well as the supermarket or to North Gate or somewhere else. So perhaps such a reduction in car parking could be accepted. But I think a full explanation's been provided within the report from the traffic engineer. So it was considered that the car parking discretion also would be acceptable. So in terms of conditions, like I said, we're recommending that condition seventeen will be amended so as not to mention the number of car parking spaces. So the new wording, we're going to pass around a printout of what the recommendations will be. And please online if you have any questions in regards to that. And also then that the special, all the special conditions is in regards to the Part Five Agreement, that the Part Five Agreement be entered into to regulate the use of the car parking.
Can we have a minute, Sylvia, just to?
Sorry?
Can we have a minute just to read this? Can we have a minute?
You can, have a minute.
The amended condition seventeen, I'm not just circulated. I think the only difference there is that it removes the reference to the number of parking spaces. The issue being that the previous condition sixteen requires a parking plan to be provided and if we were to specify a number in here, that would sort of work across purposes with condition sixteen, which as Sylvia has explained, may arrive at thirty four or thirty three spaces. Having a condition where specified thirty four would not be.
It's a big difference, so can you take some more of that?
Yes, overall, it's recommended for approval subject to the change of that condition.
You like that statement? Okay, would you like to continue through there or are you finished?
Yeah, thank you. It's recommended for approval.
Right, thank you. So do we have any questions from our Authority members to the Planning Officer? Thank you, Deputy.
Yeah, through you. Just, if you could just explain a top down Part Five Agreement with regards to the, you know, half of the parking being, the owners and part of the parking being council land. How does that operate? How does that work?
Well, the Part Five Agreement gets attached to the title. It'll be registered on the title. So it's an agreement that will spell out what the arrangements are. It will come with the parking plan and it will, we'll have to nominate which of the car parking spaces will be for the applicant and the rest will be for the council. But the applicant will actually undertake the work with landmarking and do all that sort of stuff. It will then also allocate the strip of land, which is on the applicant's land, to, for the council to be used as part of their car park. And so that, I suppose, they will have to go to a lawyer, come up with some legal wording to express that in a legal fashion, I suppose. And it will also have to have a plan attached to it that shows the car parking as well. And the Part Five Agreement will ensure today the council will be able to use that strip of land that's part, becomes part of the car park and also will ensure that the applicant gets nine of the car parking spaces dedicated to them. They won't own the land, they will only be allowed to use it basically. Title boundary will still remain in the same spot as it is at the moment.
Yeah. And the nine allocated, which end are they, in the middle or at either end or is that the?
We offered for them to choose, I believe that they probably, the car parking spaces that are closest to the building and are more on the left hand side of the car park. But we did, we did offer that they could choose which ones they wanted to nominate for the use.
And that Part Five Agreement is all outlined as part of the recommendation that they would, that?
Yeah, there's a condition there for it and I believe we should not do it without that condition.
Yeah, good. That's fine. Regarding the surrounding car park, so we're obviously taking a lot of the shortfall of what is required is based upon that we've got enough in the surrounding area. Is that, has that been, I guess justified within the numbers of the car park? Because obviously there's a lot of, there's a lot of car parks, but have we taken that into account? I read in the, in the, in the notes that it was kind of assumed that that was enough there, but I guess has it been?
Look, I didn't make the assessment, the traffic engineer made the assessment because the car park is not really. They did put traffic impact assessments, that was being assessed, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so I'm a development engineer, so I work closely with our transport engineer. As part of the development, we've got the traffic impact assessment provided with this application and the TIA addressed the parking supply and demand clearly and our traffic engineers concur with the, with the assessment being, the, the TIA sort of consider the real shortfall in the parking demand. I think in short, the actual shortfall in this parking is calculated between seventeen and twenty two parking spaces and that we've got the demand of seventy two on street spaces across the council car parking area. And yeah, I think we have enough information to justify that, if, yeah, if that answers your questions.
That's great. And just one more, please, if I could, just regarding the, on the other side, there's a three hour timeline. Would there be a timeline imposed on this parking or not?
I don't know. That'd be probably coming through the licensing arrangements that we'll be having.
I believe the parking that will be under the control of council, that would be council's ability to set the time limit on that one.
Yeah.
The nine spaces that will be allocated for this development, they will be setting their own time limits on.
Yeah, effectively they manage that as they need to.
Yes, as they consider a priority.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Cockshutt.
I've just got one question. In the original point seventeen, obviously it mentions that thirty four quite clearly and you've given us the amendment. Is there any reason why we wouldn't put thirty three as a minimum? What's to say that, you know, if you go down to thirty two or thirty one or thirty, whatever it may be, shouldn't we have some sort of accountability here and have the minimum as been thirty three? Why can't it go longer?
I guess we will have up to the extent that the parking plan that the car, we've got to be to the satisfaction of the traffic engineer. The reason is, you see on the slide, on the, on the, on the bottom right hand corner, there's a short car park and we don't know whether that car park, it's there at the moment, it's been used at the moment. But we're not sure whether that's actually the appropriate thing for whatever the car park's meant to be, so that's why we're doing this.
Yeah. Now, it's just like it says here, unsure thirty four, thirty three. So if it is short, quite clearly it's going to be thirty three, so why don't we stipulate that in the plan, say at minimum of thirty three car spots?
I need to ask Ray about that.
Yeah, I suppose we can, we can do minimum of thirty three, but I guess, well, originally it's thirty four and the aim is when we reject this condition, because we thought we want two accessible parking spaces instead of one. And we came up with this plan of locating it in the middle with share area and making that, as you can see on the screen right now, that's a bike parking area. The original share area be bike parking area and the small parking is possible. So I, I guess, I, yeah, I don't really have an answer. We can, potentially, we can say thirty three or thirty four. But there's this condition about engineering drawing, which is like another assessment, which will be, will allow us to fully, to, you know, to do our full assessment anyway and it would be a minimum of thirty three anyway and, and thirty four if we can.
And second question, how, what's the formula of having the number of inclusive car parking spots? Like two, why not three or four? What's the formula or what's the rationale? I guess obviously there's quite, it's quite appetite for more spaces in the city, so just keen to seek to understand that.
If you meant the accessible parking, then the building code sort of require one per every fifty or hundred number of, of the, the. um, number of, of the, the, like the total number required by that particular, um, you know, development or use. Now, they can comply by just providing one accessible parking. But we sort of see the opportunity and considering our demographic as well of, of our residential residents, will then say, well, why not just move this chair area and, and you can then locate or be able to provide two accessible parking spaces where it locates it, like you can see the location of it. It's meant to be, um, in front of the entrance of the building as well as per the code. So that's, yeah, that's where it comes from.
See originally that's a shaded area where, where the joint Regina Street, they were proposing to have the accessible space there. But we wanted to have it moved to the front door and we would have liked to have two spaces instead of only one. The planning scheme only requires one. And because the swept pass seems to show that they can't use that hatched car park because they can't get into it. So we're proposing that they're using that as a bike park spot instead. And, and providing the council with two accessible spaces near the door. It will be better outcome. Even though they probably could propose to have accessible space on the edge near Barry Street where they were originally proposing. And so we're trying to get a better outcome. And that's also why we're recommending that condition that we're waiting for the parking plan. That's my understanding of it.
Thank you. Ollie MacKinnon, do you have any questions?
No, I did have it. Most have been answered except just on the nine spots. Um, will council be monitoring those even though they are in control of them? Will, will that partner officers be monitoring them?
That'd be coming about through the licensing agreement, I believe, Ron, we're doing with that.
Well, I'm concerned about the shortfall.
Because the car parking, uh, uh, the car parking arrangement, I suppose is one thing. The numbers is one thing. But the layout and, uh, and the layout and all that, that's under the planning scheme. But how it's being controlled and all that, that's up to council as the owner, I suppose. But that can be arranged with the licensing agreement. That can be, uh, something so that it's clear to everyone what.
The nine additional spots there is for people to just park in it and, yeah, kind of create.
Yeah. Well, because they're creating an extra nine, it seems a reasonable thing and because they're giving us, well, not giving us the strip of land, but yeah, essentially for the use so that more spaces could have been created. So it seems to be a reasonable thing to do to allocate nine spaces for the applicant.
Any further questions from anyone? All right, well, thank you. So I'm going to ask someone to move the recommendation.
Oh, we, we need, do we have?
Oh, beg your pardon. We haven't acknowledged our members from the gallery. I did acknowledge it earlier. But do you have any questions which like to make any representation? Please come to the table. And one of our planning officers may respond to questions. Denise Bryant?
Yes, I'm pleased. Um, my question is something that's not in the agenda. So it's not clear if the Alderman or the traffic engineer has knowledge of this, okay? How can it legally planning authority grant multiple planning permits for the discretionary use of the same covered car spaces? In twenty thirteen, the Gilbert Performing Arts Centre had a shortfall of thirty four car spaces under planning scheme. In twenty fourteen, the Integrated Childcare Centre covered a shortfall of a hundred and sixty four car spaces in a total of a hundred and ninety eight car spaces into it. Completely sorry. The council promised alternative parking is available in proximity to the sites of Mil, to the Milroy and Barry Street car park, under clause ten forty eight of the planning scheme. Um, and it enabled the permits to be granted on that basis. So listening to the claimants already speaking about a legal agreement for these nine car spaces, was there a legal agreement for the granting of these permits for those car spaces to be allocated to those permits? Um, there are currently only, I think you might have mentioned seventy two car, car, the car spaces in the vicinity when there's such huge shortfalls to do with those permits. Um, there was also a mention of a future car park construction in the agenda for the integrated, um, care centre. So in summary, there has been a shortfall of two or will be a shortfall of two hundred and forty two car spaces, being thirty four for the art centre, a hundred and sixty four for the health centre, and forty four spaces, uh, for the developers of these facilities. In addition, um, the consideration should be given to the St Vincent de Paul requirements for parking in that area and the proposed rezoning for infill apartments that require no onsite car parking spaces under the state planning provisions. So there will be no parking spaces allocated for those infill apartments. We are talking about a shortfall of hundreds of car spaces with no alternative park, car parking plan by the planning authority. And a very limited number of car spaces in the area. There are staff that work in all of these facilities. Um, and also there are hundreds of appointments, um, at the fifty one consulting rooms in the health centre every week. Um, and it is known that a lot of students use those parking spaces of the day in that area. Um, public, um, attending existing businesses in the area. And now we've got the proposed two Regina Street consulting rooms and commercial businesses and many substantial relocation of services into the area. Apparently there are, um, there are already extensive off-street parking shortfall problems. And that, that is a known fact. There is no other safe on-street parking available within a reasonable distance of the area. So that's, that's the summary of that. Um, why isn't this mentioned in the council documents supplied to the Alderman before voting for this development? And does the traffic engineer know about these previous arrangements, permit arrangements?
Okay, so can we ask the officers to respond?
Um, when we look at a development, we look at each individual development on its own. Having said that though, traffic impact assessment, uh, maybe engineer can explain a bit more. But I understand that they work these things out from that they have got data on how, um, what the traffic is in the area, what the parking occupancy is and so on. I'm not really sure. But engineer might be able to answer that. But in terms of each individual development, we don't go back to have to look. Do you know there were some discrepancies on those other big facilities as well, but we don't, they're not cumulative. Well, they're cumulative in a sense that they will be probably taken into consideration in a traffic impact assessment as to what parking is available and what parking is not available. But the planning scheme usually sets out a certain number of car parking spaces depending on what the building is being used for. And then, um, if there's not that many spaces available, as it could be worked out by, um, floor area or, or whatever measure the planning scheme has, it has got different measures depending on what the building is being used for. Then there's a shortfall. When there's a shortfall, um, the applicant has to justify it with a traffic impact assessment. But I'm not really sure how the traffic impact assessment actually works out that there's still enough car parking. But maybe engineer, Ray, can you help with that?
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah, sure. So, yeah, thanks. Um, I mean, I appreciate your concerns regarding the, um, the network, uh, overall network sort of parking shortfall. And as you always said, we'll need to focus on this specific, um, DA in front of us. Uh, this, this one, as I've mentioned before, we've got the TIA, which is like a thorough assessment of the, um, a local network across, across the area adjacent to this particular, uh, subject site. And the TIA concluded that as, because the site is located in CBD area, it's sort of well serviced by, um, public transport. Um, it's just next to the bus interchange and Hobart, um, to Hobart Northern suburbs. So, um, and it's also common for the commercial developments to provide, um, less parking or, or, or to present shortfall. As there are, um, alternative modes of transport sort of available. And usually it's being in CBD, people usually just, um, just don't come in to, to do one thing that, as, as mentioned before. Um, so that's why it's like a large pool that of, of packing spaces that provide, um, for the area in particular. And the park policy aims to reduce the traffic congestions as well. So we sort of, you know, able to accept this shortfall. Um, while the, the, with particular one, uh, the TIA done the assessment and concluded that the site, um, realistic parking shortfall is, um, seventeen to twenty two spaces only. So there's, there are some reduction there as part of the assessment. And that it's concluded that there are ample on-street and off-street public parking in the surrounding area to meet the demand. So, yeah, so that's, that's the, the reason, I suppose.
I, I think another important thing is, is that the traffic impact assessment would look at the situation that exists at the time this application or this development is being proposed. So the question about cumulative approvals, I think there would be an issue around approvals that have been issued but hadn't been acted upon. But if you look, for example, at the, the health facility, integrated health facility, that's there and that exists. And the parking demand that that generates already exists today. So therefore in undertaking the traffic impact assessment, that would be taken into account. Because when they would be looking at the availability of spaces generally within the centre, that's already considered because it already exists and that's already taking up spaces. So I think that's probably the, the best answer I'm giving. But something that's been approved that hasn't been acted upon, I think that is an issue of how you look at the case of the impact of that. How that comes into the question.
Thank you. Does that satisfy your question?
Not really, but also I'd like to make the point that people come here for their appointments for the health centre. They don't necessarily come here for a share, you know, to do their shopping and things like that mostly. And therefore the purpose of the things in the house, you know? Um, so that, you know, that calculation of shared parking type arrangement is, is not entirely valid for the patients that are attending the health centre. Um, but, um, it, it's important that we support the ongoing viability of the health centre. You know, it, it's a, an important facility because it's taking pressure off, off the Royal. Um, it's also a regional, um, centre where it draws, um, patients from as far as the Midlands. Um, and they drive their cars. They don't necessarily get, um, public transport. So there's quite a few other issues that come into, um, the assessment of those.
Thank you, Ms Bryant. I think you'd have accepted that we're a growing city and we're going to be facing more and more of these issues as we go forward. But we do have professional, um, officers who have to put their reputation at stake to approve these things subject to law. And obviously a lot of people have access to buses, taxis, community transport, friends dropping them off. Um, and there's significant car parking at Northgate, Glenorky, Central, Big W, those sort of areas. So not necessarily outside the door, I accept. But, um, we do have parking officers going around monitoring our car parks. So, yeah, I'm sorry, but that's, we're, uh, we're operating within the law.
I just can't see how permits can be. Fair enough. I, I've got another question then. Um, whose responsibility is it to report on and oversee the safe removal of airborne asbestos particles when the building is demolished?
Uh, can I ask the officer that?
I believe that's being governed by the, um, building process. They will have to address that through the, through the building permit application, which is a separate application that, that they will have to get where certain standards that just must meet them. It's not like planning, but it's, yeah. I'm not from the building department, so I'm not sure what all the requirements are. But I do know that there is special requirements for asbestos removal.
So is there oversight to identify if this is, is this, which it probably is because of the.
I don't know how the.
The age of the building. There needs to be some sort of process.
Yes, okay. I'll, this will be your final question, Ms Bryant. But I'll just ask as a director.
Sure, ma'am. Um, so for the, the demolition of the building, that would need to be covered under a building permit. Well, so the building's available to assess.
The survey. That's okay. That's all right. Just one other quick question.
Okay.
The relocation of the sewer, whose, whose cost is that the rate payer's cost?
That would be the responsibility of the developer to cover the cost of.
It will be. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, John. If you would like to join us, John McCann.
Dear, thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm, um, like to, if you like, back up. The, the questions have been asked by Ms Bryant, um, but I've got a couple of quick threshold ones. I don't think, expect I'll take up much of your time. I noticed on the paperwork for today, the, um, owners listed it as Isarley Pty Ltd. And Glenorky City Council. And on the development, um, documentation, it might be a simple answer, but it's, um, Farrows Pty Ltd. I just wondered if someone could explain to me who the actual parties are, the application and, and the development.
Yeah, yeah. The application is by the developer. Um, the council's name only appears on it because it's over council land. So the car park is owned by the council, but the developer will be doing the reconfiguration of the car park. And so that's why the council's name comes up as well because it involves land owned by the council as well as by the applicant.
So is Isarley the developer, they develop, probably to reconstruct, not Farrows?
They, they, the applicant?
They're the applicant first. I just noticed on the other materials coming out from the council that, um, the project is won by the, um, Farrows Properties Group. Are they the one in the same group or different parties or? P H A R O S Properties. That's just a threshold matter.
We're, um, not sure whether.
It's on the.
Also, so Isarley Property, that, that, they, they're the people who are in the land at the moment? And it just goes and Glenorky Council because the Glenorky Council owns the car park on which work is being proposed. But that's not saying who is actually doing the work. This is the, this is the people who are in the land at the moment.
So Farrows Properties are just the builders in that?
They're, they're the people who applied for the planning permit. I don't know who, who will be doing that.
Okay, I think it's handy to be able to identify in these situations for, you know, probability and due process and, and other relationships that can exist with, with developers and as an example, but.
Sure, yeah. Just to clarify the question. So on the application, it says the owners are Isarley Pty Ltd, Glenorky City Council. Appreciate why council's there. That's not a problem.
Yep.
But on the plans, it says Farrows Property. So the project completed by Jules Architects, is it Jules?
Jules.
Jules?
They're the people who draw the plans, yes and yes.
And then it says for Farrows Property. So I think the question is, is are they one in the same, Isley and Farros the same?
I can answer that question. Um, and I don't think that, that is not a matter that's relevant to the assessment.
Okay, just, just to clarify the question as well. Yep, yep.
It just helps if you try to establish the, the process. I look and just got another, another question about that. As I said, adding to what, um, Ms Bryant has said, the, I think it's a cumulative effect that, um, Ms Bryant was trying to draw attention to about the various developments and how, uh, it comes down to the fact of discretion at the councils to whether it's adopted or not. And I think that's a situation, I know it's a matter of opinion, but where the bar needs to be set higher rather than being a fallback position. I, I agree totally with what, um, Mr Cochrane has said regards, uh. uh, the, uh, having a number there in the documentation as well, so it can't be slipped down beyond the minimum of thirty two. But from a business, related to business and speaking on behalf of some business operators here, I think there is a tight squeeze on parking. Um, the reality of people using this centre and this traffic study being done, when it's all a hundred percent clear what the top two stories we use for and how many visitations they will have and what the nature of those businesses will be, that's still a very grey area. Um, and the discretion is being applied perhaps, uh, without, um, a deep, um, issue, uh, understanding of issues that are facing business owners in the area where, um, parking is, is a major problem. Um, the, uh, can I have another, uh, question on that? Is it in the slides? And, uh, just put a view sitting there. If you took the slides up, they can, if you had actually numbers on the slides. But in your earlier slides, you showed some aerial views of the property. And in that, there's a right of way that comes out of the back of three ninety two A main road. And there's a fence around that at the moment. And it's in the photos or the slide that you put up there. Um, the, the boundaries around that have been moved and there was a line going across the three ninety two A. Um, I was wondering, is that intended to be, well, we can answer the question this way. Will there be two entrances to this property? Or just the front door entrance for bicycles and people? Or is there going to be a vehicular entrance that, um, is attached to this property?
No, that, 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 where the right of way is, that's going to be left the way it is at the moment. The front door, there'll be only a front door that's going towards Barry Street. Where we had the slide before with the car parking layout, the front door is going on to the car park.
Okay, so there won't be the access through that right of way?
No, there won't be, no.
Okay, that's a question. I, I just urge this committee in the future with, with the, uh, importance of the city that, um, uh, parking is a major part and the, the points are outlined by Ms. Bryant about it being a regional centre and the amenability of Glenorkie. The fact that people come here, they don't have to go all the way into the city of Hobart, it's a selling point. Um, but it's been lost if the parking's going to be an issue. We can't get too far ahead of, um, uh, the current reality of the aging population and the means of transport. And the long-term vision of maybe having a, a light rail through the city because that's a long way away. So I think parking is still a very important part of the lifeblood of this city and needs to be, um, an important part of any decisions made by this group.
Thank you. No further questions? No. So I'm going to ask for someone to move this motion, please. Recommendation, thank you. So we have the deputy. Um, and do you want to second it? Thank you, Oliver King. Do you like to speak to it, deputy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so obviously we've had a good discussion, uh, certainly taking into account the representations here today and also the one that was provided, uh, prior to this. Um, the, I think it's really come down to the, with the shortfall, um, regarding the, uh, the car parking, that the assessment, the traffic assessment has been done as of today or as of when it was done. So it would take into account the existing arrangements and the existing, um, car parking that is in, uh, our city. So whether we look back far enough, um, or whether we look back far enough is really irrelevant because the current traffic impact assessment was done as of today. Uh, so I think that's, that takes into, um, to, into that account. It reads, uh, and the proposal fulfills, um, the state policies, the use, uh, and so I'm comfortable with the proposal. Um, while a number of solutions, um, do rely on performance criteria, I agree with the planner's comments and the explanations provided and I'm comfortable with the proposal. Uh, I'm comfortable with the parking and the surrounding amounts with the shortfall, though it is seventeen to twenty two car spots. Um, I do see that that parking is absolutely critical, especially with being a health facility. So having that, um, ability for that, have close, um, contact in there is, is important. Uh, and the representation, uh, so I do note that. And I see that the building adds to our city. Its design, I believe, is, is modern and it fits into the existing building scape. Um, so I'll be supporting the recommendation.
Very much. Thank you, Oliver King.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. This, this isn't sort of a little Mickey Mouse project. This is a, you know, a lot of thought's gone into this and, and a lot of work's been done with your staff and I think the community have taken a great interest in it and that's, that's, um, commendable to say the least. And there's multiple conditions on this, multiple conditions. In the very first paragraph, it says use development must be substantially in accordance with planning permit. So I'm sure our planning department, then our building department, then our engineering department, everyone's going to be taking a really good look at this and following along with it. It just won't be thrown up overnight. Nothing's perfect in this world, particularly in planning. And we talk about growth in the city, we, you know, appropriate growth, and I think that's what this is. So, you know, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Oliver McIsaac.
Thanks, Chair. Look, I'm supportive of the motion. I think, um, all the questions have been thoroughly answered. It's quite a detailed report. Um, thanks to the planning team. Um, I would like to propose an amendment to add the minimum thirty three car spots in the condition A. This is for a bit of a safeguard here in the feedback, um, as well. Um, I think there's no reason why, you know, we can't put it in there. Um, I like the fact that, um, even though the rules stipulate, you know, a minimum one accessible parking space of a hundred, we've got two. And that's a really good win. Um, so, um, overall, I think it's great, um, for the city, you know, exciting for some new businesses to potentially take over it, sweet unlock some potential into the heart of the C B D. So, um, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Uh, can I take advice from the planning officers? Is that unacceptable, um, to accept that amendment in? Number thirty three, will that cause any problems later?
Thirty three being the minimum. The wording says the minimum thirty three.
So I'll just, just clarify that with you. So in condition seventeen, where it's currently worth supporting. Oh, sorry.
So C is basically going after that.
Yes. Uh, just to, to clarify, I think what you're suggesting here is that in the existing condition, uh, I think it's clause C, currently says total of thirty four clearly marked car parking spaces.
Hmm.
You would be changing that to a minimum of thirty three.
Yep.
Clearly marked car parking spaces.
And that's just based off the here.
Yes.
If you want to do that.
Yep.
That's exactly, okay, we, uh, moved that in the, um, current motion, recommendation.
So the move in the second is have to.
You agree, yeah. Do you do?
Yes.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. And that's not going to cause any problems for the officers?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you. So we're, um, accepting that in. Um, I too think this is, uh, good development and I know it will be rigorously assessed on every level as it goes through the, um, building process. I do think, uh, like if we had a car park for every bed in the Hobart Hospital and then one for every visitor, we would find that it wouldn't be much of a pleasant city. It would be overwhelmingly car. And that's in addition to everybody who drives to work. And so I think we have to move past this sense of entitlement to a car space for every activity that anyone's ever going to participate in. Um, and simply will be intolerable. So that's why we're trying to encourage people to use public transport. Uh, we have to build a case for public transport to be much better than it is. And for a lot of people to use the community transport services that are available, particularly if they're, um, on any medical benefits or, um, aged care facility. But we, I, I am, um, accepting that this will, I'm actually incredibly surprised we don't have all people upset about the parking, to be quite honest. I thought this would have raised a red flag right throughout the community, but I do think there is an acceptance as there is in the Hobart City Council where they're building hotels with no car parks. So it's about maximizing the car parks we have, making sure we definitely have those for the disabled and that we have a well-serviced facility for businesses and, um, particularly health centres to have people to be able to access them. They may not be able to drive up to the front door, but they wouldn't be able to do that in the city either, in the Hobart city. So, um, this development to me looks, um, very good in that it's going to be offering some much-needed first-class office accommodation, which we don't have. And the most important thing, of course, is more medical facilities. So I'm supportive of that. Can I move back to the deputy for any, um? No, no further comment from anyone. In that case, I'll ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? It's carried unanimously. Uh, then I'm going to pass the recommendation to the vote back to the senior statutory planner to explain the process from here.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the process from here is that the planning authority has now determined, um, to approve the application and a permit will be granted. Um, there was one representation received, so the ability will now exist for that representative uh, and/or the proponent to appeal against the decision of the planning authority to grant the permit. If no appeal is lodged within the statutory period, then that permit will take effect and we'll be able to react.
Thank you. And that, um, period is fourteen days. So that's all we have to discuss for today, I believe. Nothing else. Um, then I'm going to close the meeting at a time being four twenty seven. Thank you for your company and we look forward to seeing you again.